On August the 11th, 2020. This meeting is limited physical access to the meeting room due to chronic limitations on public gatherings, on current limitations on public gatherings. Accommodation has been made to ensure that the public is able to participate in the meeting. Public may participate in the following ways. Watch the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website. They can watch the live stream through the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts. Or they can call into the conference meeting at 1-312-626-6799, meeting ID 938-9094-9932, with a password of 548461. Callers will be unmuted and given an opportunity to comment during the meeting at specific times. Limited viewing is also available in the lobby of City Hall to watch the live video. The public may email comments and questions prior to 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting to the recorder at FranklinTN.gov to be read aloud. The city YouTube site is www.youtube.com/user/CityofFranklin. The Facebook site is www.facebook.com/CityofFranklin. And the city website is www.franklntn.gov/franklntv. We'll now call the meeting to order and I'll do roll call. Alderman Barnhill.
Present.
Alderman Martin. Unmute your microphone, Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Bransford. Alderman Speedy.
Present.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Blanton.
Present.
Alderman Peterson.
Present.
Vice Mayor McLendon.
I'm here.
Have everybody here except Alderman Bransford. She must be having some technical difficulty and we'll check back in a minute. And the next item on the agenda is the meeting procedural changes. Consideration Resolution 2020-140, a resolution declaring board of mayor and Alderman members shall meet on August 11th, 2020 for work session and conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather form of the members physically present in the same location because it's necessary to protect safety and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Barnhill. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Martin. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Alderman Barnhill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Alderman Bransford. Alderman Speedy.
Yes.
Alderman Berger.
Yes.
Alderman Blanton.
Yes.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Passes 7-0. We'll now go to citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. I think we have one caller. Is that correct? And we'll allow two minutes for citizen comments not on the agenda. Hello? Hello? Hello?
Go ahead and identify yourself and you have two minutes if you have a comment on an item not on the agenda.
Well, this is Scott Gentry. I'm not sure what's on the agenda. I cannot get my Zoom to work.
Okay, Scott, yeah, your item is on later in the agenda.
Okay.
Any other citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll now move on to work session discussion items. The first item, Mayor Moore. Yes.
Mayor Moore, this is Steve Abernathy. I live at 152 Clyde Circle. If I could make a comment.
Is this for an item not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Abernathy. You have two minutes.
Thank you. There's a, we had a Zoom conference call with developer Greg Gamble in Lad Park last week to talk about a new sports complex coming in on Long Lane. There was quite a bit of discussion. There were people in opposition. There were people for it. Greg took a lot of information down from the meeting on issues to be addressed and he's working to address those issues. Based on what I've seen so far, I'm leaning towards supporting the sports complex on Long Lane with the ice rinks. But there are some issues that need to be resolved and my purpose in talking to you all today is I know Long Lane overpass is, I think, number one on the development list and just needs to be funded. And so I'm respectfully asking the Aldermen to please consider funding the Long Lane overpass and getting work started on that earlier rather than later because if this development actually goes through, it would really be seriously hampered by traffic not being able to progress through the area, especially if the Long Lane overpass isn't completed. What, saying that, and I'm not sure if Vernon Gerth is on the call or not, but you might also look at the possibility of looking at the completion of the Corruthers and Patens Road connector at the same time because if that was to be completed, which should be somewhat easier than the overpass, it would give you an alternate route for people to get around Long Lane while the overpass is completed. Again, the sports complex, there are people in the neighborhood that are against it. There are people in the neighborhood that are for it. You may have already gotten some contacts. Again, the issues that were brought up on the Zoom call this last week are being addressed as far as a response back to the neighborhood. We just haven't heard back yet. We want to give you a heads up. This is going to be interesting one. And I know there will be a lot of people that are want to speak both for and against the possibility of a sports complex there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy. Next, we'll go to item two, which is ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance to rezone 21.24 acres from regional commercial and general office districts to plan PD 11.35 district for the property located south of Oak Meadow Drive and east of South Royal Oaks Boulevard, the vintage of Watson Glen PUD subdivision. If it's okay with everybody, we'll just consider items two and three together, which item three is the development plan for Vintage at Watson Glen. So.
As we have planning staff walk into that, let me just make a quick comment. I know we don't get into a back and forth with a citizen comment typically, but I do want to share with everybody that Long Lane is an approved project. It is under design right now. It is, for all intents and purposes, a funded project. We haven't necessarily sold the bonds for it yet, but you've fully funded it and supported it through your capital investment financing plan and it is under design now. So I just want to let everybody know it is, you're fully committed to the project. I think Amy is taking this one?
Yes, I am. Just wanted to make sure. Good, go ahead.
Go ahead, Amy. Items two and three.
Yes. Well, as you may recall, these items were already discussed at a work session, I believe, in June. And the public hearing was on July 14th, but that was canceled once it was realized that the public notification for the planning commission was not met originally for the May 28th planning commission. So the public hearing was canceled and this item was sent back to planning commission to do its proper public notification and now it is coming back to you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but there has been no changes to the plan.
Okay. Board. Have you got any questions about this item or comments?
Mayor, this is Greg Gamble representing the applicant. I have a brief presentation that reviews. I know you've seen this before. If you're interested in seeing it again, I'm happy to go through the presentation.
Does the board need to see this again?
I think it would be good to recap since we've had some cancellations and still a lot of interest from the public around the traffic. And I guess there are probably some things that Mr. Gamble addressed in this short presentation.
Thank you, Alderman Speedy. Go ahead, Mr. Gamble.
Okay, thank you. May I share my screen?
You can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. This plan is a joint venture between Bob Goodall, Warner Bass, and TDK. It is one of the last phases of the Watson Glen subdivision, which was started in the late 1990s. In the meeting with us tonight is Ross Bradley with TDK, Caleb Thorne, and Brandon Baxter with Reagan Smith. Envision Franklin identifies this property as neighborhood mixed-use policy and is a transition area between regional commerce to the north and single-family to the south. The proposed master plan is a mixed-use development complementary to the existing development along Oak Meadow and Royal Oaks. The area along I-65 is not included within this rezoning, but I will point out that we have submitted the Riverside Drive extension for review and it should be approved in the following weeks. We'd like to go ahead and move forward with the construction, completing the loop around Royal Oaks to Oak Meadow Drive. At the intersection of Royal Oaks and Oak Meadow, we have planned a, sorry, we have planned two one-story restaurants totaling 7,900 square feet, keeping the one-story relationship with the other buildings at the corner. The restaurants are bordered by a tributary that flows into Watson's branch and provides a natural edge and screen for the parking areas located behind the restaurants. We are planning to cross the tributary with a pedestrian bridge that will connect the residential amenity area to the outdoor dining of the restaurants on the corner and will connect the parking areas of the restaurants to the mixed-use parking for vehicular circulation here. Summerby is a predominantly four-story building and the proposed three-story building across Oak Meadow will transition the building height to the south. The parking areas are located behind the buildings and are screened from view by the buildings and the preservation of the existing trees within the 10-acre park along Watson's branch. This is an elevation showing you the character, the architecture. The 10.6-acre park is proposed to be privately maintained, but will be open to the public and will have public access easement over the entire park. We plan to invest some of the parkland dedication fee into the construction of the park amenities. Comments have been made about providing parking closer to the park than, and we believe that we can accommodate that within the parking lot area. We have reduced the total number of apartments to 241 and have approximately 9,500 square feet of non-residential on the ground floor. The first three buildings closest to Royal Oaks are planned with active first floors. This is where the office spaces will be located and they are not relegated just to the residents. These are office spaces that may be leased by any small businesses. Residents located on the ground floor will have stoops or porches that directly access up to the sidewalks on Oak Meadow. The sidewalks are interconnected throughout the master plan and will provide a connection to the new park and to the commercial businesses to the north. We understand that this development will have impact on traffic flow on Royal Oaks and Murfreesboro Road. As presented at the joint conceptual workshop, the arterial road impact fees estimated at 8,000, sorry, 850,000 are proposed to be used to improve intersections on Royal Oaks and address signal timing on Murfreesboro Road. We will add a third right turn lane on Royal Oaks going on to Highway 96. And we'll extend that turn lane an additional 1,200 feet to add storage. The intersections of Ram Place and Riverside Drive are failing intersections today. Our proposal includes removing the median cut at Ram Place and providing a left-in-only Riverside Drive. These improvements will result in an increased level of service to level service B. All of these improvements will be constructed with the mixed-use proposal, with the vintage proposal. So everything that you're seeing here in blue, those improvements address the capacity of the roadway and the intersections. The consideration of the items shown here in green are the, will be completed by the commercial development along I-65. That includes Riverside Drive. It includes some improvements over here by Starbucks and includes a safety consideration here on Highway 96. The safety consideration is to add a five-foot wide median to eliminate left-term movements into these driveways. This will require more coordination with the adjacent business owners and cross-connectivity discussions. Going forward, you will see the off-site road improvement agreements for both those in blue and the ones in green tracking forward at this time. So I know that was a question from the previous meeting. When will we see those off-site agreements? So those will be tracking forward with the plan itself. I will point out that the previous proposal for apartments on this property had a traffic report that did not propose road improvements. And it was noted in the traffic report that the roadways were sufficient to accept additional traffic, and this is not the case. The, this proposal is an excellent example of how development can make improvements for growth, leading the roads better in the future than they are now. We've held eight neighborhood meetings with several hundred residents and business owners. It has been stressed to us that the number one concern is mitigating the traffic on Royal Oaks. Reagan Smith did a traffic count prior to the COVID pandemic and while school was in session. They submitted their findings in the traffic study to the City of Franklin and it was reviewed by Adam Moser and was sent to a third-party reviewer, Neil Schaefer at Greg Judy. They have all concurred that the improvements specified are mitigating not only this proposed plan, but also the additional 195,000 square feet of commercial office plan behind Home Depot. We use the city's required growth of 7% by 2024. So the analysis was not done based upon the 2019 numbers. It was based upon 2024 with a 7% increase in traffic. To give you some perspective there, the 195,000 square feet of proposed office behind Home Depot, it equates for 70% of the total traffic generated by the new development. And it equates to 6% of the total traffic on Royal Oaks. The multifamily within this proposed mixed-use contributes 2% of the total traffic on Royal Oaks and is much less traffic than if the property were developed under the existing base zone as commercial. We did analyze the property built out 100% commercial and saw an increase of over 66% from the proposed residential plan. The rezoning to mixed-use and the inclusion of multifamily reduces the overall development traffic impact. But what it does that is significant is that it allows the development team to make all of the road improvements on the front end before any of the offices constructed and before the multifamily or mixed-use development opens its doors. Without the improvements, the intersections will continue to lose efficiency. We have heard through these neighborhood meetings, the appreciation of neighbors on the reinvestment of new buildings along the Royal Oaks corridor. And much of the corridor was constructed near the end of the 90s with several buildings that are currently without tenants. Vintage of Watson Glen will inspire new reinvestments in this area. Thank you, Mayor.
Comments from the board?
Greg, on the traffic, could you give us a summary of like the existing service levels as projected at 2024 without this development and then with the development with the road improvements you're proposing?
Absolutely can, if I can share my screen one more time. So here are those projections shown here in this table. This is for the AM morning peak hour on I-65. We have current levels of service of D and on Royal Oaks Boulevard at Highway 96, a level of service D. This first column shows what it is today, the existing levels of service. In 2024, this is with the 7% background growth added. So we start to see failing intersections at Royal Oaks and Ram Place. So, sorry, the letters that are over here on the side are after the improvements. If development, if our proposed development does not occur and you have the 7% increase in traffic without the improvements that we're proposing today, you start to see the time of delay at the intersections continue to drop significantly. And, you know, one, for instance, here, the Highway 96, I-65 southbound ramp by 2024 will be at a level of service E with a 60-second delay. Our improvements take that to, well, keep it at a level of service D. In the evenings, then we have existing levels of service again here shown on 2019, adding the 7% increase in traffic for the 2024. Without the development, we have failing intersections and Highway 96 Royal Oaks has a delay of 68.8 seconds. With the improvements that we're talking about making, we're mitigating that additional, not only the proposed development, but the 7% increase in traffic with the 2024.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I think we have some public comments. Angie, go ahead, Beth, Alderman Berger.
Thanks. Hey, Greg, so I was just looking at that. So with the improvements, interesting chart there, by the way, you have F all the way to E and then, right, existing E, and then F all the way across no matter what happens for Highway.
For this, this is the, you know, the southbound lane here coming off of I-65 and then turning onto Highway 96. It is not a failing intersection today. It's a level service E. Adding the 7% background traffic, it will be a level service F with a delay of 92 seconds. With our improvements, we're able to bring that back to 82.2 seconds delay without having an interchange reconstruction. My understanding is that these levels of services will remain like this during those peak out, during that peak hour moment.
Well, it's pretty impressive. You're going from, very helpful, rather, that you're going for Royal Oaks at Watson Glen. Yeah, Watson Glen, I'm sorry, from an F to a B. So that's a great improvement. And the Home Depot, an F to a C, that's a great improvement. Yeah, there's a lot of good improvements here. I don't think we do a whole lot, though, at 96 and the interstate until the state decides they're going to help us out and put a diamond in there, which we need to do because, you know, it is what it is. But one other question I just had, you're talking peak hours and what exactly are the peak hours here?
Peak hour is defined as in the morning and in the evening when the traffic volume counts are at their highest.
Okay, so, okay. Thanks. So.
Angie, have you got some citizen comments? And do we have anybody on the phone waiting, Mr. Sookie?
So I have unmuted or asked to unmute everybody who is on the telephone. So if there's anybody on the telephone who would like to speak to this item, now is your chance. But anybody on the phone will need to unmute yourself or agree to unmute as I have asked to unmute.
Seeing none, go ahead with those emails.
Okay, today we receive, or the last few days, excuse me, we received 13 different emails from the following people. Elizabeth Piper, Pam Esperger, Sharon Thack, Conrad Shuck, Anthony Brown, Nina, MacIver, Tracy Hudson, Houston, Elsie Farrell, Barry Cullen, Patty Tipton, David May, Diane Weissmiller, and Shelley Laurie. The comments were all of the same tone and had very similar opinions. So I'm going to summarize the three main concerns that came through in all of these comments. First is the concern with adding developments without improving the roads in order to handle the volume around this location. Second is concern with the development in Franklin in general, wanting to ensure that we maintain green and native areas to remain undeveloped so that it doesn't become overcrowded. And a concern with too much growth and density in the developments that are happening.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to note that all of these emails were provided to the board in their full. So those have all gone to the board. They have those. But we did want to read the names of those who provided input and Angie just provided you a summary of the nature of the comments that we received with concerns about the development.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board? You ready to move on?
Yes, sir, I do.
Alderman Blanton.
I just, I know it was unfortunate that the documents did not go out in the normal sequence, but I had a lot of people that were concerned about this being uncommercial and now residential and the influx of more traffic. I think, if, as I look at this, the predominance of the residential is not closer to Royal Oaks, but almost more by Summerby. Is that correct, Greg?
It is south of Summerby. That's correct.
So more on her, on, as you come down the hill from Riverview and Oak, I guess the Elk's Lodge.
Correct.
So I guess maybe, I mean, you've done the traffic study, which of course is the dominant feature here to debate the introduction of this. I think if we can go back to two years ago, it was, it was all residential at that time, correct?
That's correct.
So this is probably in keeping more with trying to abate a rampant traffic barrage of residential traffic on Oak Meadow.
The previous master plan did not propose road improvements at all. And we are setting forth a path and what I think is the right thing to do, which is to mitigate those impacts.
It also has less units, Brandy, than the other one.
Well, I've just, I've had a lot of people just concerned. Change is hard. People, you know, are frustrated, I think, for us with Mack Hatcher and the way that Royal Oaks, you know, feeds into Mack Hatcher there over the years. It's been a huge problem. I don't know where we are on the T-DOT plan to expand that portion between Murfreesboro Road and Lewisburg Pike all the way to Columbia Avenue. I think that would be a big game changer just for moving cars. And Paul, I don't know if you can add to where we might be on the Mack Hatcher widening for that portion. And I'm going to silence myself.
Yeah, what I, what I know is T-DOT is moving forward with the environmental portion of it. And we're really waiting for them to add it into their three-year plan, taking the approach that, you know, waiting on T-DOT to fund that major improvement.
And Paul, I believe that, isn't preliminary engineering in the three-year plan as well?
Yes, sir, environmental and preliminary engineering.
So it's, it's in the pipeline. We obviously don't have funding yet for final design and construction, but it is positive news that those preliminary engineering and environmental are funded. So in the, in the current three-year window.
Well, I just think that's something that we have to consider when you look at the, I hate to use the word periphery, but if you expand out to weigh the traffic flows, especially as you leave Forest Crossing or even Riverview, the connectivity here too provides for opportunity traverse around the area in a different way as well. So that's not at all of me admonishing the development, but I just think that we've gotta go out beyond even what the traffic report is showing. That if T-Dot is looking at expanding this, it's gonna alleviate more problems.
Mayor, I'll make one more comment. I believe I've been at all eight of these neighborhood meetings and I'll concur with all the emails. Every meeting starts off with traffic concerns. There is no question about that. I mean, this is in my backyard. And I think, but then when you look at the mixed-use development, the fact that if we did nothing, we just leave those intersections at F service levels, we continue to deteriorate. And I think, you know, people want infrastructure to be improved and this is one way to do it with this development and the road impact fees. So that's one way, I guess, one reason I tend to support development.
Okay, no other comments. We'll keep moving along. We're gonna consider items four, five, and six together, which is a resolution requesting a referendum for the annexation of several properties located south of Long Lane, east of Interstate sixty-five and outside of the southeastern part of the Franklin urban growth boundary with a consideration of a resolution adopting a plan of services for the annexation and also an ordinance to zone the three hundred and forty acres as a state residential district. Who's gonna take that one staff-wise?
That would be me. So I'll go ahead and
Go ahead, Joey.
Thank you. The city has received annexation requests for nine properties in the Goose Creek Basin that are located outside of the Franklin urban growth boundary. In order for these properties to be annexed, a referendum of the owners of the properties to be annexed must be held pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated. The referendum was previously discussed at April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty Boma Work Session Meeting. Boma will vote on September eighth at a public hearing on whether to request a referendum for annexation of the nine properties. Should the referendum occur, the election is proposed to be held on November third in conjunction with the state general election. As far as the plan of services, outlines the, plan services outlines how infrastructure will need to be provided to serve the nine properties that comprise approximately three hundred and forty acres should the Board of Mayor and all of them decide to hold referendum and should the referendum pass. Water is located within the micro, my, Millcroft, and sorry, utility district. Water availability, adequate fire flow, and pressure must be approved prior to development on any of the parcels. The extension of reclaimed water infrastructure will be required to extend, to be extended to serve any property pending jurisdiction of this area for reclaimed water. The property is within the Goose Creek and Maze Creek sewer basins. The owner of each property shall be required to extend sanitary sewer mains and interceptors necessary to provide service to the property. These mains interceptors shall be sized according to the expected demands of development and these basins as determined by a sanitary sewer study. As properties develop, road improvements and road extensions shall be required in accordance with Connect Franklin. No additional manpower or equipment will be necessary for either fire or police protection. Since these parcels lie outside of the UGB, the planning commission will need to amend the envisioned Franklin land use plan to include these parcels in the document, including assigning them appropriate design concepts after annexation. And the ordinance for this package includes zoning these properties to a state residential until envisioned Franklin can be amended. As you may recall, last year, there were several properties also in this area that were outside of the UGB but annexed into the city. Several of these properties fill in those holes that were created as a result of that. With all of that in mind, staff recommends approval of both resolutions and the ordinance for the annexation of the nine properties. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joey or any comments from the board?
This would be a November, on the November ballot and the property owners would be, the property owners and residents of those properties would be permitted to vote.
Do we have anybody on the phone or any email comments?
We do not have any email comments. Let me check all the phone lines.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment, but I'll wait until Angie answers.
You go ahead, Alderman Burger, while she's working on.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, talked to my county commissioners, Greg Lawrence and Chad Story and a number of county residents and, you know, people concerned with the outside of the urban growth boundary areas, our urban growth boundary and outside the urban growth boundary areas. And I just wanna, I just wanna offer this up because numerous people are listening in on this. But, you know, we annex in, in our urban growth boundary, but sometimes we have been asked to annex in outside the urban growth boundary. And, and people, rightfully so, ask us, where, where do you stop? Where do you end that? How far do you go into the county? So I think there's some, I think there's very logical things to say here that I think need to be said. And, and where it is a logical place to annex in, in that area, we have infrastructure. We have the ability to put, developers have the ability to put in additional good infrastructure. It is near I sixty-five, so it has great access, access. And the other thing is, it has the ability to have gravity sewer in that area. So I think just FYI for people who are concerned, where do we stop? Where do we end that? I think the logical place to end that is where gravity sewer is not available. And so these areas, unless I'm wrong, Paul Holson, you're on here, you can weigh in. But I've been informed and know that we do have gravity sewer available in this area. So this is the logical place for growth to go for the city of Franklin and it's easily dealt with through the infrastructure and through the availability of our services. I just wanna offer that up in case people are saying, you know, why X this in, what happens? Why, why this area? Why, why would you do this? And why do people ask for that specifically, that area? There are other areas that might be asked to be annexed in that are not appropriate where infrastructure sewer, gravity sewer, especially for that, there's more, it would be more inappropriate. Just wanted to offer that in case there were some questions about that or people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burger. Angie, anybody on the phone?
So all phone callers have been unmuted by request. So if anybody on the phone has a comment, go ahead and finish the unmute and make your comment, please. Thank you.
Saying none, any other comments from the board before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a consideration of revised extension plans and lease expectations for Cheekwood Golf Club of the city-owned property located on the southwest corner of the Mack Hatcher Parkway Spencer Creek Drive intersection. Mr. Stuckey.
I'm really just handing it off to Vernon Girth, who has worked on this. This is an update in terms of where this project is and the concept that, that, the lease partner that you identified almost three years ago is working off of now. And I think Vernon also provides sort of an overview of the path forward. So I'll turn it over to Vernon to kinda set it up. And I know we have some of the other folks involved in the project on the line as well. So go ahead, Vernon.
Thank you, Eric Mayor and Alderman. Good evening. I provided, as Eric mentioned, a summary in the packet today. And I know that Greg Gamble and others are gonna speak following me to give you a brief overview. But for, for those listening this evening, I thought I'd, I'd try to summarize what I had shared. Back in the fall of twenty seventeen, the Board of Mayor and Alderman decided that Cheekwood should continue to expand plans or develop plans for expanding their nine-hole golf course onto the city-owned parcel. Actually, it's our water and sewage utility property located on the southwest corner of Mack Hatcher and Spencer Creek Drive. Since that time, there have been several iterations of plans. The latest is, is before you this, this evening. What the plan is, we had, while the, while the book is, is not a formal development or site plan, I did ask several members of our department review team to, to review it, which they have. And I provided their comments as a separate attachment in the board packet. We've had discussions recently in the past that maybe this plan may mirror something like a top, top golf. And I've been assured in talking with, with Greg Gamble, that is not the case. And I've also been informed that Nicholas Design has come on board to help with the design of both the existing course and the new facility. That will include a driving range, teaching school, clubhouse, and, and restaurant. There have and there are questions that remain that should the Board of Mayor and Alderman choose to allow Cheekwood to develop a development plan and submit it along with, with the rezoning, that we would look critically at, at the site as we would with norm, any development. And there is very likely several modifications of standards or adjustments to our zoning ordinance that might come into play when we get into that level of detail. We've talked about lighting and fencing and those would all be critiqued and discussed in detail. But if the board decides to go forward, city staff, myself advise that we amend the resolution twenty seventeen that was approved back in twenty seventeen to include and require that some middle of a development plan along with a lease agreement be submitted no later than the deadline in December of this year, which Greg Gamble has assured me they're looking to come forward sooner than that. We did ask for the applicant for submittal of information regarding their expected lease arrangements. That has not been submitted. And I understand Greg is going to address that issue too. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we're looking for guidance as the Cheekwood team is looking for guidance how to move forward from this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girth, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Greg Gamble and Todd Jester. If I could, who's gonna speak first?
I'll let Greg go first, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing to point out as well, you're actually discussing and voting on tonight the charter amendment that would allow for a longer lease period of time, which is pretty significant and important to Cheekwood. But Todd?
Yeah, I, and thank you guys again for the opportunity to be in front of you. During our discussions, we were talking about the lease issue. I did a quick step-back look at this project and considered adding some assets to our project that would help ensure the success and long-term success of this project. And one of that is adding some local financial involvement and not just financial involvement, but also local involvement with people that know and understand golf development, have a passion for the game as I do. And we're very fortunate that we were able to find two individuals locally to, to bring on board with this financial involvement, one of which is Paul Pratt and the other is Jimmy Franks. And we're, we're very thankful to have them on board and to help us go forward and to bring a great product to Franklin. The second asset, as Vernon alluded to, is I picked up the phone and called my old boss down in West Palm Beach, Florida and got Nicholas Design involved. Researching this the past eighteen, twenty-four months, there's a handful of these products in the country. We are definitely on the leading edge and cutting edge of combining existing golf courses with the modern technology innovations that are continually changing practically monthly with the game of golf. Talking with Nicholas Design, they are most definitely on board now. They will be designing the golf course in collaboration with me. They not only bring huge resources as far as what the, the design comes, they bring their experience from all over the world. They have marketing advantages. They have things that, that as we set standards for these different things that are budding in our industry, what, what better firm to partner with than Nicholas Design? Golf is kinda disappearing in Franklin right now as, as we see open space in golf. And so we're, we're poised now to really reinvest and really get golf back on the map and get this pushing forward. And Greg has a video, we updated our last video that you saw about eighteen months. And after, if Greg could share the video, I'd love to entertain any other questions or comments at that time. I don't have the audio going, Greg. Is that?
No audio, Greg.
Yeah.
Can you restart it?
For over two hundred years, the city of Franklin, Tennessee has been an American beacon for historic charm and southern hospitality. A special place rooted in the past is an eye-opening to a bright tomorrow. Cheekwood Golf Club is one of two public golf courses in all of Williamson County. Underway is an exciting new expansion that will create multiple golf and outdoor recreational opportunities for the people of our community that are both economically and environmentally sustainable. Our vision for the future of Cheekwood Golf Club is to upgrade the existing course to a regulation nine-hole championship course and host local, state, and national tournaments. The practice facility will integrate a six-hole R-three course where junior golfers will learn the game's rules and etiquette and hone their skill level. The full expansion will include the founding of the Cheekwood Golf Instruction Center and Golf Academy, where students of all ages will be taught by PGA golf professionals. Three-tier covered hitting base utilizing the latest state-of-the-art technology. A lighter driving range with uncovered hitting stations on natural grass and practice areas, enabling year-round instruction and recreation for all agents. Venue space to host social, business, civic, corporate events, and a variety of small to large community events along with a southern cuisine dining experience. And the installation of a public trailer featuring beautiful greenways that will connect Cheekwood to Franklin's park system. It would be a truly serene gathering place for golfers and non-golfers alike. The expansion of Cheekwood Golf Club will reflect the high standards and character for which Franklin is nationally known. Leading this effort is Franklin resident Todd Jester, co-owner of Cheekwood Golf Club. Because our vision for Cheekwood's future is a golf facility at the top of its game, we are elated to announce Nicholas Design has come on board to work in collaboration with Todd Jester. Nicholas Design is the world's foremost golf course design firm and has completed more than four hundred twenty-five spectacular courses all over the world. The expanded Cheekwood Golf Club will be a unique destination where people of all ages will gather for recreation and our youth will be professionally mentored in the game of golf and instilled with valuable life lessons. After growing up in middle Tennessee and traveling the continent in his golf course design and development career, Todd Jester returned to his roots, making Franklin his permanent home and is bringing his skills and experience to this unique project. Cheekwood is from grassroots, homegrown, where memories are made and community thrives.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any comments or questions?
I think I'll just go down through the, are you through as far as your presentation, Greg and Todd?
Yes, sir, happy to answer.
Okay, well, let's just go down the board list here. We'll start out with Alderman Barnhill to see if he has any questions. Any questions, Alderman Barnhill?
No questions, Mayor.
Alderman Martin. Any questions?
Yes, I was concerned about the lighting and also the fence, the wire fence that you have for the practice fields. And I'm told that the fence will not be as tall as I was afraid it would be because that's very distracting to a neighborhood, and we don't want that. And I think, Greg, you told me that that was not going to be, or maybe Todd, you told me that you would not have those tall.
Yes, ma'am, there are some very tasteful ways in the netting and things can be done, Alderman Martin. We also want to adopt the dark sky concept with the lighting. It absolutely is not stadium lighting. I know, you know, we're sandwiched in between the Franklin High School and also BGA. Adopting the dark sky is what our intent is. And also with the netting, we have a huge area out there, and we're hitting into seventeen acres. Whereas when you see the so-called top golfs, their calling card is huge stadium lighting in urban areas and huge tall netting. They want you to see them from miles away. And so we absolutely do not want to be that. We want to be a golf club that takes advantage of technology.
Well, we don't want to see you.
Yes, so. Understood, yes, ma'am.
It is our anticipation to have a development plan submitted within the next month and a half to two months. And we understand that lighting and netting is a very important and critical issue. We'll make sure that we address that in the neighborhood meeting at the joint conceptual workshop and in our development plan.
Thank you.
Alderman Branford, do you have any comments?
No comments for Todd or Greg at this time. Nice presentation.
Alderman Speedy?
Sure, I guess my comments are similar to the lighting. But I mean, if you look at the map, you've got the football field at Franklin, the baseball field, the rec center, BGA. And I guess you've got the whole Franklin wastewater treatment between the potential golf in that neighborhood. So my only comment would be, I know that the one industry that probably benefited from COVID seems to be golf. I know Legends has a waiting list now, and I think maybe a good opportunity for this, a good timing, I guess.
Good time.
Alderman Berger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A great presentation, I think. You know, it will be important how this looks for Mack Hatcher, and I know that you will address that and do a good job of it with Greg Gamble on board and with your team. Amazing, amazing, amazing that you can get Nicholas Design in here and have a Nicholas marquee on this amazing course. So that's just over the top. The technology, and I've been reading about a lot of this because I serve on the Sustainability Commission. And Todd, you're absolutely right with the dark sky. The technology is, you are not going to be BGA. You're not going to be Franklin High School. The dark sky technology, and then there's some things that have been developed over the last five years, actually, that I know that will serve you all well as you design this. The other thing is in Palm Beach, I know that they're very high-end, and they have some netting down there. And visited that.
Yeah, we've had long discussions with Nicholas Design, and you're absolutely right. The Breakers community on Palm Beach Island has added some extremely tasteful netting and things of that nature.
Yeah, if you've ever visited the Breakers, you will see that just recently, actually in the last few years, they put up some great netting that you hardly see. And I think, was it you, Todd, that said something about top golf, you know? Yeah, their calling card, their big marketing brand.
If you don't mind me interrupting you, Alderman Berger, we don't have a development plan.
Right.
So I'd like to move on.
Concerned about that, but I just wanted to mention that. And I think, so, thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation.
Alderman Blanton?
First of all, I applaud you for bringing two locals into the fray that are avid golfers. I think that will be helpful. I also think that there is a community of people who really miss the opportunity to publicly play golf. So I think you're hitting a really strategic place there. I appreciate the deviation from what we all knew as a à la top golf-esque offering and how you're kind of backtracking that to make it a little bit more palatable. I know that residentially, being a Mack Hatcher, you've got the Cheekwood residents, I'll call them that, the people off of Spencer Creek, but also just, what is it called?
Ponte Sella?
No. Just not been. So I think you're heading in the right direction. I think you're hitting all the bells and whistles. And I applaud you kind of like pivoting on where we were and where we are today.
Well, thank you.
Alderman Peterson?
Thank you for the presentation, no questions at this time.
Vice Mayor?
I have consistently supported the expansion of the golf course. I don't know exactly how I will know the difference between a top golf and an expansion of the golf course, but I'm pretty sure I'll know the difference when I see it. This weekend's Woo-Hoo Girl Buses reinforces my opposition to anything that becomes top golf.
Very well stated. And very graphically described. So we look forward to the development plan within six to eight weeks is my understanding, plus a proposed lease agreement. And are there any people on the phone that want to make any comments or any email that can pop the vice mayor's?
The request to unmute has been sent to all callers. If there's any callers that would like to speak, please unmute yourself and do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jimmy Franks. Can you hear me? I'm not sure you can hear me.
I can hear you loud and clear, Mr. Franks.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Alderman for allowing me to speak tonight. This is a wonderful opportunity for Franklin. As you know, I've been a member of Legends since they opened many years ago. And I feel like that times are changing at the Legends. There's been a lot of rumors circulating that the appraised value of Legends was, as a golf course, was approximately thirty-eight to forty million. That could be off a few million there, but the appraised value for commercial land was about a hundred and fifty million. So I have a suspicion that there's a chance that waiting list is insignificant to the membership, that part of the course or all of it could possibly be sold. There's also, there were some ideas about the little course being sold as well. And, you know, my thought is I have five, my fifth grandchild's on the way next month, and three of my grandchildren play golf now. And, you know, for us, my wife, you know, the fact that they can take the kids to school and do their thing in the daytime and then pick the kids up from school and give them some entertainment for a couple hours before it's time to go home is just a huge attribute to Franklin. And, you know, I just think that I got excited about it when Todd and Vernon and all of us have been speaking about it. And we just feel like that we could deliver a high-class, quality venue that Franklin will appreciate and be another amenity as Harlandale Farm is and as Main Street Festival. And I just think that it's a great thing for Franklin, and I appreciate the opportunity to be involved and glad to answer any questions too, if you need something from me.
Any other comments on the line? Seeing none, we'll move on to.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I just want to be clear. What I believe staff is recommending that we bring back to the Board an amendment to your 2017 resolution that would put this timeline in place where a development plan and lease agreement would need to be submitted by December fourteenth. So we would ask you to act on that in two weeks, and then that would just set up a timeframe for these other components to come forward to you by the end of the year.
That would just codify what Mr. Gamble was saying.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, this won't just show up in December. We'll bring it back to you in two weeks as an update or amendment to your previous resolution.
Okay, we'll now move on to draft resolution 2020-132, a resolution to accept and recommend approval of Amendment Four to the 2016 Comprehensive Transportation Network Plan, Major Thoroughfare Plan to the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to Vernon as well. Our staff team has worked with a couple of property owners on the western portion of our community. As you may remember, back in the spring, we had a request for the initiation of an annexation process that involved a property on the western portion of our community. And it identified a line that was on our transportation plan, our roadway network plan, that raised some concerns about how that would impact our development and the look and feel of our community. And so we've worked on some of those elements. Wanted to give you an update on that tonight. Vernon will walk you through that. I believe we also have a couple of the property owners on the line as well. And so we wanted to touch on this topic and get some guidance and feedback to help instruct what may happen with a request for annexation. So let me have Vernon take you through that, and then we'll be glad to answer questions and give folks a chance to be heard as well. Go ahead, Vernon.
Yeah, before Vernon starts, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we're talking about an amendment to the Major Thoroughfare Plan. We're not talking about a development plan for any particular property. We're not talking about the annexation. We're talking about a road network, and that's what I'd like to keep us focused on in our comments as a board and also for people that are on the line. So go ahead, Vernon, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Eric, again, and thank you, Mayor, for emphasizing that important point at this time. We know that one of the properties in the area are contemplating development, but the major thoroughfare plan that outlines Collector and Arturo roads comes into play in this discussion. And before we are willing to accept any request for annexation in our urban growth boundary or any development plan, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we know that a future roadway, where it's going to be located and how it's expected to function. Then we can come back to take a look at this very, this area that's near and dear to many, many people and families in our, in our community of how it might develop, not only in the long term, but maybe in the short term, and how the families, many of them that have generations of roots in this county and area, what their expectations are. So with that, last week, I had the opportunity to sit in two meetings with staff, Mr. Gamble, Cliff Smith, who was representing one of the property owners there. And one of those meetings included Scott Gentry from the Gentry family. And we had a very delightful conversation and candid conversation. And even though the proposed extension of Old Charlotte Pike will not encroach, at this time, be encroaching onto the Gentry property, it is adjacent to it as being proposed with the latest iteration. But Mr. Gentry believes that, you know, now's not the time to allow development to proceed in this part of our community and county. And we respected that conversation. So that's where he is, and I know he's on the line to restate that. The next meeting we had with several members of the Short family, and I actually had a separate opportunity to talk with David Short last evening. And Greg and Cliff have been working with both the Gentries and the Shorts over the last several weeks to come up with an acceptable alignment for this section of Old Charlotte Pike heading north from Highway Ninety-six West. It's an integral road that if development is going to ever concur in this area to help move traffic, and we know that traffic is the number one concern of residents in our community. Mack Hatcher, when it's completed and starts to open up to vehicular traffic next year, is obviously going to spur interest in development along that quadrant. And having additional infrastructure in place would help those families or owners of those properties move forward, I mean, in accordance with Envision Franklin and our wishes if they're going to annex into the city. The Shorts, however, while they generally concur with the latest plan that Greg is going to share with you, they have a lot of questions. When's it going to be built? Who's going to pay for it? And how's it going to work longer term? There is a right-in, right-out that T-Dot is including through the Short property that would connect to the signal that is currently being installed at West Haven Boulevard and Highway Ninety-six West. So they do have some questions, and that's where we are at this point in time. But again, the discussion this evening, if we can come to some consensus on the alignment of the road, we would definitely come back at a later date to talk about land, land use in that area, not only for the property that Greg and Cliff represent, but how we go forward in this part of our community. If we don't have guidance on the alignment of an integral roadway such as Old Charlotte Pike, then it's misleading to property owners about what's going to happen, and it's difficult for staff to give proper guidance on the future of this area. So your guidance ideas are much appreciated. I know the Short, several members of the Short family are on the call too. And thank you for giving me time to give you that overview from the staff's perspective.
Is Mr. Gamble going to make a presentation? Or is anybody else going to make any presentations? Are we ready for?
I have one available to give a little bit of background and kind of inform the Alderman, yes, sir.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. My client CPS Land is interested in making a proposal for development on this property here labeled site. It's color-coded in green. You can see underneath there is an orange dash line that traverses north and south. This dash line is proposed to be a future collector road. There's also orange dash lines that are shown here going east and west. And again, those are future collector roads. Other collector roads are identified here as Carlisle Lane, Del Rio Pike. You have the future Mack Hatcher located here. You have the future Mack Hatcher located here, tying down to Highway 96 for reference. The area shown here in purple is the Gentry Farm. And adjacent to the site on the eastern side are properties that are owned by the Shorts family here. The current alignment of the Collector Road in the Major Thoroughfare Plan cuts across the Gentry Farms in this location here and cuts across Mr. Montgomery's property just to the north of that. The City of Franklin Engineering Department in putting together the Major Thoroughfare Plan is looking for opportunities to create connectivity within an area that is currently agriculture, but is identified in envisioned Franklin land use plan for conservation subdivision development policy. We have a concept plan that aligns with this yellow dash line that you're seeing here. This yellow dash line is a proposed collector road route that would bypass the Gentry Family Farm to the east and would tie in at a 90-degree to the property that is adjacent to the Shorts, or that is at the Shorts Farm. After meeting with the neighbors for input, we have a second version of a master plan here. This second version of the master plan moves the Collector Road a little bit further to the north, clipping just a small portion of the Shorts property here, but still the geometry of this location, the geometry of the curvature does meet the requirements of a collector road for the City of Franklin. We have requested to be heard as a part of the joint conceptual workshop this month in August to discuss the plan in more detail. But again, as Vernon stated tonight, it was really a discussion about the Collector Road and the Major Thoroughfare Plan. In both instances, we believe that we can design a collector road to meet the current design speed geometries and stay outside of the Gentry Farm. Mayor, would you like me to leave this screen up for conversation? Or would you prefer that I take it up?
I think that would be very helpful if you'll leave it up. And I think I'll just start at the top of the list of the aldermen and let each one make a comment. So we'll start out with Alderman Barnhill, if you'd like to make any comments on the alignment of the road.
If we go through with changing the Major Thoroughfare Plan, I certainly look at the yellow version more favorably than I do the orange version. And I'm not sure, we probably really need to hear from the Short family and from the Gentry family both before we do a lot of commenting on some of this stuff. But it does, it would impact the Short family at least. It does not touch the Gentry Farm at all in the new alignment. But I do like the yellow one better if the will of the board is to change the Major Thoroughfare Plan to allow for this Collector Road.
Mayor?
Alderman Martin, go. Go ahead, Mr. Garrett.
Sorry, just to add another piece of clarity here. The Planning Commission is responsible for amending and adopting the Major Thoroughfare Plan. However, we want to make sure that before we proceed with any development plan or annexation of any property in this area, that we have a better, more certainty on the alignment of this particular road. The Major Thoroughfare Plan does allow us flexibility in road, horizontal road alignment, but because, we do not want a discussion on a development plan to focus on the road alignment. We'd rather have it focus more on the merits of the development plan. Therefore, we're looking for guidance from the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, which we would translate into a resolution as a recommendation to our Planning Commission to amend the Major Thoroughfare Plan. Just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Alderman Martin.
As I have said before, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
As I have said before, I cannot believe that we have allowed that plan to stay as it shows with the red line. It's terrible that that has gone through, that I've talked years ago that that thing was out of there. I think we said we wanted it out when Polte was coming in to build their big thousand development, thousand homes. I definitely think we ought to get it out of there. Now, as far as the alignment goes, if the, the yellow is certainly better than the other, but we need to protect as much of this land as we can. I would love to see not any road development at all through here. I just think that this land is really so pristine, and once it's gone, it's gone. So I would like to see no road at all through there, and I would like to get it out of the transportation plan.
Alderman Branford. Are you there Alderman Branford? She was on the call. Unmute yourself Alderman Branford. If you'd like to speak, if not, we'll move on. We'll skip over, go to Alderman's.
Okay, unmute, okay, the red line, I agree Alderman Martin, that was a little too much encroachment upon that pristine land. But the yellow, yellow line recommendation is one that I can live with. Now, did I hear you say that the Short family had already met in some kind of nod regarding that, that clip in the edge of their property there? Has that already occurred Greg? A meeting with the Short family regarding that proximity to their edge of their property with the yellow proposed?
We have met with the Gentrys, with the Barclays, with the Shorts, with Mr. Winn and Mr. Montgomery. I have not heard a conclusion at this point as to a preferred alignment, but I believe that they are in the meeting tonight and can speak to that.
Okay, right, yeah, the red line was definitely need to be modified. And so the Major Thoroughfare Plan change, I would encourage that. Thank you.
Alderman Speedy.
Sure, I guess, just so I understand all the moving parts. I guess the Short properties are currently in the city, but zoned agricultural with conservation subdivision as envisioned Franklin. And my understanding that Campbell and the Gentry Farms are in the UGB, but if the Campbell site came in and annexed, they'd be conservation subdivision as well. And I guess my other question is, on that Mack Hatcher extension, is the only exit going to be the Del Rio Pike? Are there any other exits off of Mack Hatcher?
It'll just simply be Del Rio Pike, and then there'll be a right-in, right-out at Old Charlotte, which T-Dot resisted giving that right-in, right-out, but ultimately did because of concerns with Old Charlotte and flooding and overtopping the road. They allowed it. The other side of Old Charlotte has already been cul-de-sacced.
And then the Collector Road, I guess this would be built by the road impact fees from the development, or is this something that's actually on our CIP plan already?
If the board chooses to move forward with a Collector Road in this area, we would look to a road impact fee offset agreement with the developer to drive it. So basically, the roadway would be development-driven.
And that was a question that Mr. Short and the family had that would have to be worked out in more detail.
And I guess I'd add in these other, these undeveloped areas of the city, a lot of the roadways are shown as low priority and to be driven by development. And a lot of times we work with development as they come in to finalize that roadway alignment with the adjacent property owners. And so, while it's included in the, in the Major Thoroughfare Plan as a long-range project, it's not included in your immediate CIP.
Alderman Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if this road goes through at all, I can only support the yellow. I'm, I'm going to speak to this development in a different way. Greg Gamble is on here still, and I think you need to talk to your client about this. The south part of 96, we have West Haven, extremely dense community with loads of homes. Probably our most dense development in all of Franklin. The north side of 96 is totally 100% different. We have farms, we have the Gentry Farm, we have century farms up there. Then it leads out into the north part of that to Del Rio Pike. And, and we turned down a development, a senior community development down there, north of that years ago because of the rural pristine town of land there. I just think, there's a book out, it's been out, in fact, Bob Martin told me about this book originally, I believe, in early, sometime in the 1990s. This book came out, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe a gentleman by the name of Art, Rob or Bob or something like that, Art wrote a book called Rule, if I recall right, it's Rule by Design. I think this north side of 96 deserves a different feel, a different element. We have the Gentry Farm right there, it's a century farm. And I think we have to be convincing of that and how to protect that. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board. I think we need to look at a book, we need to look at something that has been reiterated in the book, Rule by Design, and say, how does this get developed? I mean, the people have the right to sell their property and develop their property. But how that property is developed, I think it needs to be more in keeping with the area north of 96 and, and what is north of that as well. So I think we ought to talk about Rule by Design, and I think we ought to go back to the drawing board. And I think the client here, Greg, whoever your client is, Mr. Campbell, I believe, or something, if that's correct, your client needs to be looking at this area and saying, how does he preserve this area? So I think this is really important. I just, I just don't want to support a lot of density in this area. I would have a hard time doing that. And again, as I said, if there's a road that ever goes through here, it's going to have to be on the yellow, the yellow pathway there that you've got on the screen. That's all my comments tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Blatton.
I tend to agree with Margaret, I want the road to disappear altogether. I think if you've got the opportunity for Del Rio to traverse through Mack Hatcher, development out Old Hillsboro Road is going to be in the county. I don't know where that stands in our UGB, but I think if development is what's going to push this down the road later, I think the yellow line, I just, I don't see it as something that we need to even have on the plan. So I say take it out altogether.
Alderman Peterson.
I've looked back on the Major Thoroughfare Plan, and somewhere I saw, and I don't, I don't necessarily have the most recent one because I had to look for it online, but they're showing that the price of something like this might be $13 million back in whenever we were talking about it. And I guess I first want to say, if there has to be something there, obviously it needs to be the yellow versus the original plans that we had for this on the Major Thoroughfare Plan. I think on one, one map, it was like number 86, and I guess it's, is it number 90? Whatever it is now on, on the, on the one that we're, we're talking about, it's the same thing though. But, but my point is that this would be extremely expensive, and it means that even if this particular development built this on their site, that would be only a tiny piece of it, and it wouldn't even connect to anything unless we did something to Old Charlotte there ourselves. So it, it doesn't, doesn't appear to be something that, that would be a top priority for us. As I say, if it was, if this is just a change to the Major Thoroughfare Plan, and there is one to be done, I certainly prefer the yellow line to what we have on the Major Thoroughfare Plan right now.
Vice Mayor.
If a road, if a road has to be built, the yellow route is the best in all likelihood. So we'll see. I'm, I'm kind of like Alderman Martin, I'm not a big fan of building any roads right here anytime soon.
Okay, let's go to the phone lines. And I'm not quite sure how much time to allocate to our phone line. How many people do we have? Well, I'll have a little leeway as far as, I think maybe start out with about three minutes each, and we'll go from there. So who've got on the line?
The phone lines have been, a request has been made to unmute. So anybody who is on the phone and would like to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself and take your turn.
Okay, hi everyone, Mayor and Aldermen. My name is Megan Field, can y'all hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, great, I'm a resident of Lad Park. I was watching your BOMA work meeting, and I heard remarks from another neighbor who represented his own viewpoint, one that is not necessarily from the Lad Park Board.
I'm going to have to stop you right there. Are you talking about, talking to the item that we're currently addressing?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I apologize. I, I thought these were public remarks.
We've already passed that time.
I see.
We had a opportunity for citizen comments. Yeah, you can call it the seven o'clock meeting, and we'll put you in the citizen comment time there.
Thank you so much, I apologize.
No, no problem, thanks. Next.
This is, can you guys hear me? This is Bill Barclay. I think our neighbors are on here, and Scott Gentry, I think, would you like for them to speak first? If they would, you're on.
I'm on, Bill, can y'all hear me?
Go ahead, Mr. Gentry, we're going to give you about three minutes here.
Thank you Mayor. Just want to thank you first. Look at this area, not necessarily just us, George Barkley's around the site. I'm, I'm speaking to the whole western basin. I sent an email with a plan I hope most of y'all got. And I concur that I don't think there's development as proper as it currently is, is stated in the, in the UGB. I think we need to look at making a special recommendation for this area with much, much less density. If that's true, I don't think the road is needed at all. I think the Mack Hatcher extension in Del Rio with some possible improvements could handle anything in this area in the future. And it's just too valuable for us to, to not pause and relook at this, as a couple of Aldermen have alluded to. And I just ask you to do that, please. Any questions of me?
Good evening, this is David Short.
Good evening. This is David Short. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, for allowing us time this evening. I, I do echo sentiments of many of the Alderman and would just for a moment, give you a little family history on the Short family. We have been in Williamson County for the last 200 years and on this farm since 1889. And we as well are designated as a Century Farm and have been woven into the fabric of Franklin and Williamson County. We've seen a lot of changes through the years. Old Charlotte has, has been through this property when it connected the county seats. And we're a long ways from that now, from fronting on Boyd Mill Road to Highway 96 and all the changes that have come there. Our latest changes have been from higher density development nearby. We've got numerous sewer lines that have crossed the property and utilities and improvements and upgrades that, that we have withstood to help development nearby. At this point, I guess in the last 20 years, the major changes have really started. And as of late, Mack Hatcher has now come down our property line. So this is not a surprise, I would say. And we also are, you know, in agreement with our neighbors. I think any development needs to be looked at very carefully as we look to the future. We see Mack Hatcher opening and the right in and right out for Old Charlotte being a concern. The, the traffic experience down Old Charlotte Pike from Del Rio and, and those side roads prior to Mack Hatcher being here was kind of a major thoroughfare with folks looking for a different way to stay out of downtown, yet reach I-65 corridor. As, as the thoroughfare plan goes, I think we're very interested to see what's going to happen. Again, Old Charlotte is on our western boundary. It bisects our property. The collector proposed was another bissection of the property. We, we have through talks with developer and the engineers have come up with a solution that would less impact our property, but it still impacts us. You know, I think at this point, we would ask that we would be able to sit down with the city and the staff and at least have discussions on how to minimize that impact. I don't know how much in control we are of how this development will go. And, and believe me, we're experiencing that impact for being on the corner of Mack Hatcher and 96 at this point. And by virtue of where we exist, that, that's our new home. So I guess we would ask through this to, to be able to be part of that planning process, not only to discuss the collector, but the, the north-south part of the collector as it reaches out to 96, what would that impact look like on our property, as well as the Old Charlotte. And I know it's got an overlay and is very important on trying to keep the look that Old Charlotte has now. But yet we also realize, as we see daily folks running, jogging, biking, and a lot of activity out there, I think as the new road opens and traffic returns, I, I think it's going to look much different than it does as the road's been closed now with Mack Hatcher being constructed. So thank you all again for your consideration. And we would, we would like to be able to further the discussion on the yellow portion of this as it impacts us.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Mr. Barclay, were you wanting to make a few comments?
Thank you very much. Yes. I, you know, I concur with my neighbors. We really appreciate you all taking the time to allowing us to speak and, and express, you know, our concerns. And, and it sounds like, you know, collectively that there's some, we have a lot of shared concerns with the Board of Aldermen and from some of the comments that I've heard. I just sort of echo what Scott Gentry was saying is that I really think that what, what I, what we're seeing here is this major thoroughfare plan, by putting in any, either the yellow road, the orange road, or the red road, is sort of begging the question of density. So I know that you're saying, well, we need this connector road, this collector. But we're, we're just now, and then also in this map, it says future Mack Hatcher. That thing is well under construction, it's almost finished, as David Short can tell you. And so I think it's, this is a really good time to look at the envisioned Franklin Plan, which is, I think from what I can read, is considered a, is supposed to be considered a living document to, you come back and review things periodically. And, and with all the changes that are happening, I just think that you could look at this and stop, maybe pause everything and say, do we really need this connector road? Because if you put that in, I think Alderman Peterson made the comment, that's going to be a very expensive road. And as a result of that, the developer is going to have to build a lot more houses. So you beg, that's why I'm saying you're begging the question of density. If you spend that money building that road, then they're going to want to put a lot more houses in there. And the density is, is what we don't want. And I just think that road is just, I think it's way premature to consider a collector road at that point, when you're just now finishing Mack Hatcher and you do have the Del Rio Pike connectivity. And so I, I think also the policy statements that are all the way through your envisioned Franklin Plan talks about preservation of the character of the rural landscape. And that that's part of the, the charge of that document is to make sure that that preservation is, is considered. So I think it's a really good time to pause and then just look at this area that we're, we're all, this whole basin, this area, this western area, and, and talk about, you know, what is the appropriate way to handle that? And I just think it's premature to try to make a decision on any kind of collector road or anything in the major thoroughfare plan without having complete, we now think it's time to narrow down and look at that vision again. And because what the Gentry Farm brings and the Short Farm brings, and, and I know we're, we're on the national register with the original home seat in 1791 for this whole area. And so collectively, you've got that, and then all these adjacent farms, Lingfield Moore's, Century Farms, you've got a lot of area all the way around Del Rio Pike. It's such an historic character that really deserves this kind of special attention. And that's, that's really my comments. I'm sorry to go wrong like I did. Thank you very much for your time.
Have we got anybody else, Angie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Nguyen. Would like to take a couple of minutes if I could.
Okay, go ahead. Are you, you are addressing the road network, correct?
Collector Road.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I wanted to first say, echo what Scott is trying to, and Bill is trying to deliver in that I feel like that we need to look at options for potentially eliminating the collector road through the site. I appreciate Alderman, Martin, and Berger, and Blanton in understanding the historic nature of this and, and their thoughts on it. But, but the reason I want to talk to that is I want to give everybody a little bit of background. First and foremost, on the site, city site today, it does show that that collector road in the yellow actually hugs the Gentry Farm, those two lots to the right. So that collector road in yellow on the city site today shows that that road is directly next to Gentry Farm. But either way, my comments that I'm getting ready to make are, are valid either way. And, and what I want to tell everybody is a little bit of history on that. In, in 2000, Coach Gentry plotted three lots back there. And those three lots are to the left of that collector road. And those three lots were plotted so that Alan's kids and Scott's kids and their kids and their kids could have the opportunity to have home places on that historic farm. We all know that if we allow a collector road, whether it be in this design, or whether it be to the left, like I referred to on the city site today, we all know there's not a single person here that would build their home next to that collector road. So in essence, either way, that ability to build on those lots is gone. And we all know that it's going to start as a two lane and it's going to get larger. And so we met on August 3, the Gentry's, the Barclay's, the Montgomery's, and my family met with CPS. We proposed a thought process that we felt would be ideal for that 58 acres. And this is important because it has to do with the collector road. And this thought process was around, how could we potentially eliminate the collector road on that site? And the suggestion was in a, a larger lot subdivision that would potentially eliminate the development cost for CPS, making it a viable option to still put something back there and, and still have a profitable development. And so we are asking, and I'm asking the same thing Scott is, and the same thing Bill is, which is to pause the conversation about the collector road through the site because we know what it's going to turn into, and relook at other options to, to, to make this a more viable road for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments there?
Mayor.
Alderman Barnhill.
Could we, I would like a little history on the site itself and who owned the property and how we have gotten to the point we've gotten to now. We, you know, it, it's, it is the site that it is. Who owned, 20 years ago, who owned the property? Does anybody, I mean, somebody has to know. All right. Bill, Scott?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak up. The Puitt family owned that 58 acres, the Puetts, Albert Puitt's family.
So Albert and Judy Puitt owned that. And they sold?
With their family, Albert Senior and, and they owned the, the site, yeah.
Because a lot of that, I mean, we shouldn't even be going there. We, we were instructed to go thoroughfare plan discussion, which drove whatever. And we've gone every which way we can go. But a great deal of that is floodplain property. I mean, I remember me, Judy, Judy and Albert was the ones that did not want to, they wanted a better way to get in and out because they're blocked off on the west side of that property at certain times. Because I met with them over there many years ago. So, you know, I don't, I don't know where we're, where we're at on this. But it would appear, if I understood Vernon right, what we were doing tonight was, if the road was built, which, which did we prefer, but it was a planning commission decision to change the major thoroughfare plan. Is, am I right on that? Am I in line or, or am I way off base?
You're correct, Alderman Barnhill. Yes. And we're looking for guidance on drafting a resolution that either remove, removes this from the major thoroughfare plan or realigns it so we can share it with the Franklin Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I have a comment as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman Berger. And then I want to get through the last few items also.
I'm certainly always one of the Alderman that are concerned with connectivity. I'm all for it. I think connectivity is crucial. But I think the bigger picture here, and I said before, if any road goes through there, it has to be a yellow line. But I'm not sure that I can support either of the, any of those. But I think the, the bigger concern here is not, is not the road. But the bigger concern here is the right development has not, has not been brought to us. I referred earlier to Rural by Design, a book that speaks to this very kind of area. And I think that this area is one that should follow those guidelines. We, and the other thing is, I think we need to wait until Mack Hatcher is open and see what kind of traffic patterns play out and what kind of cut throughs people are using. And I, I think it's a little too early to decide that. I think traffic patterns will develop after Mack Hatcher is open. So I think it's premature. But I think the bottom line I want to say is this is more than about the road. I think Greg Gamble, you're on here still, I'm sure you need to go back to your client. I don't think this is the right development for this area. I don't think so at all. And I just can't support that because I think the north side of this road is, with all the Century Farms around it and everything, calls for a total different development for here. And I would appreciate you looking into that with your plan. Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have any more phone calls in, then we're going to move on to item nine, which is the City of Franklin contract 2017-0132, a revised sanitary sewer reimbursement agreement between the City of Franklin and Platon Properties Group, Inc., doing business as Goodall Homes with respect to the Shadow Green subdivision PUD.
You, you may not remember, but this, the nature of this agreement came before the board about three years ago. And now this is back for final execution. I think it's a fairly straightforward agreement. We've got a couple of folks on the line from engineering that might be able to address anything specific, but this just provides for a reimbursement arrangement for the sewer line related to the Shadow Green project.
Eric and Bernard Mayor and Alderman, actually what this agreement is doing is changing the entity name that was originally, that was originally assigned to it. The terms and everything else, the financial obligations remain the same and unchanged.
But it had never been executed. It is being executed now through this action.
Correct.
Item 10, City of Franklin contract 2020-186 with Kronos for telestaff. Any questions about that one? Item 11, consideration enter local City of Franklin contract number 2020-0197, agreement between the City of Franklin, Williamson County concerning the disposal of batteries, oil, paint, antifreeze, and electronics, commonly called BOPA.
So this is just a, a one-year extension of our arrangement to provide the BOPA collection services, not only for Franklin residents, but also for residents of Williamson County. We may, in the next 12 months, look at a broader arrangement. The county was very helpful in giving us some startup funds for some of the capital investments and other things that got us going. But quite frankly, we'd like to explore some participation in the operating costs as well. And, and we'll explore that over the next year. But we needed to extend this for 12 months and, and then we'll return to some other discussion down the line.
Mr. Mayor, I have one comment real quick. Hello?
Go ahead, Alderman Berger.
I serve on the Sustainability Commission, and I just want to say that this service is extremely important. And I'm so thankful that we have it. It's an extremely important service that we have. And Jack, thank you so much for everything you do on this. And I hope that we can continue this and even do a better job of it in the future. Thank you.
And we'll see you back for the Board of Mayor and Alderman here a little bit after seven. So thanks for everybody's participation and meetings adjourned.